All right, everyone. Welcome to the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Jersey Village City Council. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum of council president?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Next, we will have Indication and Pledge of Allegiance by Jim Fields.
May your light shine brighter, and may the voices of the most silence be heard loud and clear. Defend their cause, O God, through the governing body tonight. We pray for wisdom, for strength, for courage to do what is right and good for all citizens. Now, Pledge of Allegiance, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you very much, Jim. That brings us to presentations. We have presentation for Employee of the Month Award for December twenty twenty-two and Employee of the Year Award for twenty twenty-two. Austin Bleese, City Manager.
All right, Mayor and Councillors, thank you very much. I am pleased tonight to make the Employee of the Month and the Employee of the Year presentations. So our December twenty twenty-two Employee of the Month is Jacob Daley. Jacob Daley joined the Fire Department, or joined us in August of twenty twenty-two as a firefighter and was promoted to Fire Inspector in November of twenty twenty. Joined in August twenty twenty, promoted in November. Chief Fitz wrote this about Jacob Daley. Jacob Daley is one of the most dedicated employees I have seen in a very long time. Even when off duty, Jacob is working. Since he is over all of the MDT computers in our vehicles and over all radios, he continuously receives phone calls off-duty Bud issues. He immediately deals with the issues and begins to fix them. He's come in multiple times when off duty to deal with the issues and with the new CAD implementation process. Jacob also places himself on-call nearly every evening and every weekend to make sure an investigator is available for response. His dedication to make sure the department is always in ready state is outstanding. Over the last year, he's taken on multiple projects, including the CAD project. He assisted Tyler Technology in building that out and continues on a weekly basis to work with Tyler and other internal staff to make sure the CAD is working well. Jacob has taken responsibility for all the vehicles and in-vehicle radios and computers. He spends a great deal of time to make sure both these critical assets are functioning for the department. He's taken on the role of paying all the financial invoices for the department as well. He's responsible for multiple software programs that's being used. He oversees the responder three sixty pre-planning and hydrant mapping software, the fire inspection software, the fire mobile, and all the products that they're using to head task on it. It all creates a big task for the employees to handle, but one person handling it is, and is still doing more. He still has his fire inspections that he does as well, which is vital to keeping the community safe, and his appointments with contractors and plan reviews never go unmissed. Overall, he's a hard-working, dedicated employee who's always going the extra mile. He's always trying to do the right thing. He's one of the best employees that we have. So Jake Daley, congratulations on being the December two thousand twenty-two Employee of the Month. And Mayor, Councillors, our twenty twenty-two Employee of the Year. The Employee of the Year is selected by department heads from everyone who received the Employee of the Month Award. Our twenty twenty-two Employee of the Year is Sebastian Marquis. As one department head put it, "You can turn to Sebastian for help with any project at any time, and he'll be there for you." Sebastian is ethical, hard-working, dependable, and an all-around great asset for the city. His work ethic and dedication makes him a rising star within the city. He joined us just last summer, July of twenty twenty-one, as a park supervisor, and he's done amazing things for us since then. So Sebastian, congratulations on being our twenty twenty-two Employee of the Year.
Congratulations to both of you, and congratulations to all of our Employees of the Month throughout the year from which the employee, or all of our Employees of the Month throughout the year from which our Employee of the Year was chosen. We have a tremendous staff, and I would imagine the selection can be a little tricky at times trying to pick the right person. So congratulations. Okay, that brings us to citizen comments. Citizens who have signed a card and wish to speak to the City Council will be heard at this time in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda. The city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond only with statements of factual information or existing policies. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to City Council. The first card I have is from Mark Malloy.
Hi, my name's Mark Malloy. I live at seventy-eight oh three Hamilton Circle, past City Council member for the City of Jersey Village, Texas. Citizens' comments for the twelve nineteen twenty twenty-two City Council meeting. Please make my verbal comments and documents given to the City Secretary a permanent record of this meeting. I'm here tonight to talk to and ask questions of the Jersey Village government officials and City Manager about the city-managed Jersey Meadows Golf Course. I want an answer as to why, even though the citizens' taxpayers of Jersey Village, Texas, have been forced to heavily subsidize the cost for the JV government to own the golf course since the city's budget year nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, to now the end of year twenty twenty-two in the amount of a very close estimated eighteen million dollars, I want to know why they think that's okay. And then I also want to know why does the current JV government think it is perfectly fine to spend another now-estimated eight-point-six-five million dollars of the JV citizens' taxpayers' money on the golf course by building a new golf course clubhouse and event center without allowing the citizens' taxpayers of Jersey Village to vote during an election to decide on the ballot to vote yes or no in allowing the JV government to do their desired golf course clubhouse and event center. The current golf course clubhouse was originally going to be renovated, and the estimated cost to do the renovation was between seven hundred and eight hundred thousand dollars. And then there was a plan to build a new golf course clubhouse, and that estimated cost was one-point-three million dollars. How has this now escalated to eight-point-six-five million dollars? How has the Jersey Village government intentionally accumulated this amount of money to do this project without the JV citizens' taxpayers' approval? Why are the JV citizens' taxpayers now going to have to continue heavily subsidizing a money-losing golf course? The current mayor has said in the recent past that the golf course does not cover its costs of operations if all expenses involving the golf course are included, which is not being done. So anybody want to comment on the questions I've got, I've asked?
Which one do you want to start off with? There were about five questions in there. You got two minutes left.
I want to know, you know, why you think that the citizens of JV should have had to subsidize the golf course for all these years, and why now you're going to spend eight-point-six-five million dollars more on the golf course?
Because a majority of citizens want that.
I don't believe that. You, as a government here, you did not allow them, and not you, but the past governments back in two thousand, they did certificates of obligation, which did not allow the citizens to do a bond referendum to vote to approve being indebted to purchase the golf course. And so then what ended up happening is the golf course was supposed to be able to cover all of its costs, and the citizens were not supposed to have to subsidize any cost of the golf course, and that didn't happen. And so now you're going to take and build this golf course clubhouse and event center, and you're not going to allow them to vote to approve or disapprove that. And what ended up happening is the council here was considering doing a bond referendum in the amount of ten million dollars to take and specifically fund doing the golf course clubhouse and event center, and then you chose not to do that. And so basically, that's making it to where the citizens don't get to vote to make the decision. And so...
So you prefer that we take out a bond?
I prefer that you let the citizens make a decision on this, and they did not vote you into office specifically to take and allow you to spend eight-point-six-five million dollars to build a new golf course clubhouse and event center.
Well, we've had a number of elections since this proposal first came up, and so far the people who have supported it are still sitting up here. People who have been on council that have not supported the golf course and have been very vocal about that have found themselves very quickly, former council members. So I'm going to let that speak for itself.
Like, you know, the other problem is, is...
You can finish your statement, Mark. I was speaking for a bit.
The other problem is, is now you're going to take and you're looking at trying to build a sports stadium on the other side of two ninety, and, you know, when we had the first mayor's town hall meeting, you took and you came out and said, "Well, we're not most likely going to allow the citizens to be able to vote to making a decision on that either." So, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And I'm not going to repeat myself on what I've said in the past. I think if anyone wants to discuss why that's the case and why Texas law makes that difficult, I'm more than happy to have that conversation with folks. But we're doing what we can. But I, again, you know, elections have consequences. People are elected based on what they do or what they don't do, and, you know, we have to respect what the electorate decides to do with all the information they're given. The next card I have is from Jim Fields.
Hello, my name is Jim Fields. I live at one six four one three St. Hillier. Mayor, City Council, thank you for allowing me to contribute to tonight's meeting. We have the fantastic, the best police department, I think, in the universe. Just to give you an example here, we had a bunch of signs stolen, and I dare anyone outside this city to call in and get a response in five minutes to ask you where campaign signs are going in this county that where crime is just out of control. Yet, in this city, due to the leadership of mayor, and the city manager, and of course, the chief police, they found, I sent them a video, and they captured this, they arrested this person, and this person was, also had a warrant out for the arrest. It was a bad apple. And I just, I just can't thank mayor, city council, city manager, and chief police enough. Thank you so much. It was Sergeant Limerick who called me back. I mean, it's one thing to call it in, five minutes to get an answer, two weeks later to get them. Unbelievable. Thank you so much again. Another thing I want to say is, I want to thank mayor, city council, also for applying back to the email on the management of the stadium. Thank you again for that. I appreciate that. I am asking one thing. If you could move on the consent agenda ten where the city manager is talking about the, I think it's the clubhouse. Let me look real quick here, sorry. Yes, on the clubhouse. If you could move that to regular agenda. And then, as for the, the golf course and convention center, I know you're trying to earn us to, I guess, generate money, but mayor, right now, we are in some extreme economic conditions here, and they're not getting any better. So I recommend that instead of having, spending the, the eight-point-six million dollars for a new clubhouse, do a tax moratorium, property tax moratorium, and twenty twenty-three for us. Because that's what it's all about, right? And last but most important, may everyone have a joyous Christmas and a very prosperous new year. Thank you again, everyone.
Thank you, Jim. Merry Christmas to you as well. The next card I have is from Bruce Bowden.
Bowden on Lewis Street. I came up here several times and complained about, or asked questions about the golf course, so I did your homework for you. I'm going to summarize it. I worked with Niskado on this, so we got pretty close numbers. With the change in debt service of twelve million seven hundred thousand, and revenues of thirty-one million, and costs of thirty-five million, and infusions from general fund of one-point-six million, by the time we get out of it in twenty twenty-five, we'll, the cost of that golf course would be just a tad under twenty million dollars. Okay? So if you break that down, that averages out to about a loss of two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars per year. To give it a little bit higher sight on that, in the last five years, it's only two-hundred-and-forty-two thousand dollars a year loss. Now, this has ranged quite a bit, from a low of thirty-four-thousand-eight-hundred when you include capital, to six-hundred-and-ninety thousand loss when you include capital. So what this tells me, and I've asked you guys to review it, and here's my suggestion, that you make an across-board increase in green fees of ten dollars per round. Now, the interesting thing on this, and I think you guys need to look into this, the way this thing's done, you get rounds of golf, and then you got tournament rounds. Well, in the last four years, you've had a compression of the, of the difference between per round and tournament round. Ten years ago, you were making five dollars more per round. Now, you're not making fifty cents. So there should be something looked at that, because if you're going through doing all the stuff for a tournament, you should be making a little bit more money than just the average Joe showing up on the golf course. So the, here's the other thing, on a round basis, you averaged just under thirty-five thousand rounds per year. Last year, you came up with forty-one eight, which is pretty good, but on three, five-year average, it's just thirty-seven nine. So you got to kind of round it. But at that, on the five-year, or if you take last year, you'd still have to raise it five eighty, no matter what. You do it on a five-year, it's six forty, and if you do it on total average, it's seven dollars around. So I'd like for you guys to definitely consider doing that, because my gripe is that it should be making money. Okay? And I think you ought to actually split the new improvements away from the golf course and let the golf course stand on its own and try and get it profitable. And then you can decide whether you need to really do the eight-point-four million dollar project, because, well, without debt service restructuring in two thousand twelve, you'd be another five-hundred thousand dollars in the hole. All right. She's got a copy of it. You guys are welcome to it, all you want. My last comments are on the baseball park. If it's such a great idea, I propose that you guys look for outside investors to cover minimum twenty-five percent up to forty-nine percent. If it's such a great deal, outside investors would be back behind you. But more importantly, if it's such a great deal, I'd expect each one of you to invest in it too. Because if you're not going to put up your money to make money, why would you put up the citizens' money? So throwing that out there. Unfortunately, I won't be in town for the next meeting, and I couldn't make the last one, but I'd like you guys to consider that. But I do think a minimum investment, outside investment should be considered. And if you can't meet that criteria, I think it ought to go by the wayside. Appreciate it. Have a good day.
Great. Thank you, Bruce. And the last card I have is from Kimberly Anau.
My name is Kimberly Anau, and I live at one five six zero one Singapore Lane. As my sixteenth installment on Jersey Village history, nineteen eighty-six pop culture included Crocodile Dundee, the A-Team, and the Bengals Walk Like an Egyptian, while nineteen ninety-seven included Good Morning Vietnam, Cheers, and Los Lobos, La Bamba. You're welcome, you're welcome for both songs to replay in your heads for the rest of the night. Jersey Village continued to progress as a growing city with dedicated employees and volunteers. Fire Chief Frank Marr presented to Mayor Norman on behalf of the citizens of Jersey Village the cornerstone award from the nine-one-one organization. Construction on the toddler's waiting pole began for thirty-five hundred dollars by Tropical Pole Company. Tippi Carmody, Susqueentineal Chair, and Debbie Murray, Founder's Day Chair, reviewed the activities for the upcoming April twentieth celebration. There was a special election for the Home Rule Charter, of which three hundred and six citizens voted for and thirty-six voted against. The election results were certified by Presiding Officer Evelyn Henry and clerks Jeanette Natardis, Carol Fox, and Yvonne K. Henry on August ninth, nineteen eighty-six. Implementation of the home charter led to appoint as Acting City Manager, City Secretary Carol Fox. On August eighteenth, then Harry Nagel was named as City Manager effective October twenty-seventh, nineteen eighty-six. Approval was made for the site of an elevated water storage tank on the high school's property and to connect with the site Seattle Street Water Plant, which would include painting the city and schools logos. September twenty-first through the twenty-seventh was named as National Emergency Service Week. Mayor Norman announced January as Blood Drive Month and for residents to donate blood if they could. Permission was unanimously given to block off one mile near the high school for the Cypress Fairbanks Special Olympics fundraiser to be held on March seventh. Resolution passed, which proclaimed March twenty-eighth, nineteen eighty-seven, as Mrs. Bessie M. Henry Day. The new police chief, Ed Peters, gave his oath of office on May eighteenth. The Planning and Zoning Committee recommended to approve a carport ordinance, which became eighty-seven dash three. Councilman Wright presented to Mayor Norman and Fire Chief Frank Marr an Exxon Company USA involvement fund check for thirteen hundred dollars to purchase a light bar and low-band radio as city funds were not budgeted. Tippi Carmody presented two new official City of Jersey Village flags for City Hall. The Senate Avenue Expansion Project was to begin by November nineteen eighty-seven with the Beautification Committee to discuss the new Esplanade landscaping, while Beltway Eight's construction plans were also progressing. No parking and tollway zones during certain high school hours began for Seattle, Singapore, Australia, and Congo from Solomon to Senate, though was modified to four hundred feet westbound from the center of Solomon instead of the entire distance on the request of residents Mrs. Volkman and Mrs. Disgan. In the Jersey Village Star, it was mentioned that the city was looking for a slogan. On the final note, my husband Eric and I bought our Singapore at Solomon House two years ago, and we could not be happier with the, with the decision to not just live here, but to be involved with the city and community as we can. Our two thousand twenty-two activities include the Farmer's Our 2022 activities include the farmers market, city council meetings, committee involvement, DDD socializing, the women's group, locally-owned eateries, local elections, Founder's Day celebration, the Police and Fire Academy classes, Fourth of July parade and celebration, the fire department's Community Emergency Response Team certification, the Senate Avenue Brewing Run Club, Holiday in the Village and Parade, and especially to see Santa tour the village on fire trucks for Christmas Eve. We wish our fellow villagers happy holidays and for all of us to have a happy and healthy 2023. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kimberly. Going through the historical minutes, when those were first posted online, that was probably one of the fun facts that I found that you hit on was the fact that the very first person to ever fill the office of City Manager when that was created following the adoption of the charter was Carol Fox. If you go through those minutes, you will find out Carol Fox was a woman who did a lot. There were a lot of titles she held during her time at the city, so thank you very much. Okay, well, those are all of the public comment cards that I have, so that brings us to the city manager's report. Austin Bleese.
Mayor and councilors, we have the report in front of you. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the city manager regarding his report?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I just wanted to say I'm thrilled about the diving board that was in there, so thank you.
No other questions? If not, then we will move on to the consent agenda. So as I usually state, you know, if anyone would like to, any member of council would like to remove an item from the consent agenda, I am going to go ahead and, right off the bat, go ahead and remove item number five from the consent agenda to be considered at the top of the regular agenda. Do any other members of council have an item from the consent agenda they would like to remove?
On behalf of the citizen who spoke earlier, perhaps we can go over item 10 about the golf course as well?
Okay. Do we consider item 10 at the top of the regular agenda?
Second. Do you need a second on that?
Oh, do we have a, oh, sorry, do we have a motion? Oh, no, sorry. Councilmember Wasson had, was removing item 10, so we have five and 10 pulled from the consent agenda. Does anyone want to remove any other items? No, no worries. If there are no other items to remove-
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda, with exceptions of five and 10.
And now I'll second it for the third time.
I know, I know Christmas is getting here closer, and we're all eager to get out of here, but-
You were just reading my mind. It's good.
Yeah. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the modified consent agenda? All of those against? Any abstentions? The motion passes. So we are going to start with what was item five on the consent agenda. Consider ordinance number 2022-4A repealing Chapter 6, Article 1, Section 6.6 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jersey Village entitled "Transportation or Delivery of Beer or Malt Liquor on Sunday", providing a penalty, providing for severability, providing for publication, and providing for an effective date. Austin Bleese, City Manager.
Mayor and councilors, this is an ordinance that really just kind of cleans up some old, old blue laws. It references horse-drawn vehicles. I haven't seen one of those in my time in Jersey Village here. Actually, I did in the parade. I take that back. There was one in the parade. But it was not, it was, oh, pony, sorry.
It was not carrying beer.
Right. Steph feels this ordinance is not necessary. By removing it, we would help brewers, manufacturers who want to do that as well. One, one item I do want to point out is in drafting this, it should say Section 6-9, not Section 6-6. There's a typo there on my part.
Okay, thank you. And I understand we have two council members who will be recusing themselves from this discussion and vote. So council members Wasson and Mitchum. So with that, discussion amongst the remaining council members.
I can't believe it took us this long to find the horse-drawn carriage language.
There's quite a few things that need to be cleaned up. Just whether or not it was needed at the time, this is common sense and it's causing an issue, so it makes sense to just take it out.
Okay, can I make a motion now?
Well, let me just, just, because there's probably a lot of people out there going like, well, what in the heck are you guys repealing? Because we've all read it, but others may not have, so just very briefly, you know, there are, there are still a few blue laws sitting out there on the books, and it turns out we've even got one here in Jersey Village. Apparently, six days of the week, it's perfectly fine to move beer, to transport beer, if you manufacture beer, to or from a location in Jersey Village, but on Sunday, it's not allowed. You can transport through the city if you're neither originating or ending your transport in the city of Jersey Village. But that, that's the law that is being repealed. It's been on the books since at least 1977, if not before. Despite racking my brain and looking through as many of those historical minutes as I could for a justification for it, we couldn't determine one, and so it was looked at, and we decided this just doesn't make any sense. And because we now have a brewery in the town where this, you know, up until now, I don't think we ever had a situation where this even would have applied, then it only made sense to get rid of it unless we could justify it somehow. So unless anyone else had anything to add to that, then yes, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to consider ordinance number 2022-48.
Second.
Just to clarify, motion to approve of the ordinance?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
And that was a second. Okay, great. We have a motion and a second on approving the ordinance. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance, or the repeal, yes. The ordinance passes unanimously amongst those who had not recused themselves. So with that, we will move on-
Do we need to have an abstention on that?
Would they abstain or just not?
You said recused, and then we have two recusals.
So don't record an abstention. They have voted to abstain.
Yeah, I mean, that's what they're doing with the recusal, so it's, yeah.
Okay.
And just clarity, like, Mayor, you raised in favor, right? You raised your hand in favor.
Oh, I didn't vote at all.
Okay.
Since, since I'm not acting in a capacity where I have a vote. So it's, yeah, it's three, I would consider it 3-0, and whether it's an abstention or a recusal, I think it effectively, it's, it's a form versus substance issue. So either way, it passed. Okay, that brings us to the, what was originally item 10 on the consent agenda. Receive, update, and provide feedback on the golf course clubhouse renderings and project. Robert Bassford, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. This agenda item is an update from the previous month's November agenda item. The only thing that's really updated is as we continue to develop the interior portion of the golf course clubhouse, I'm updating the renderings to reflect the background lists, you know, where we were from January 7, 2022 to today. In bold at the bottom, I'll read the, that's the only thing that has changed since November. We've held two meetings with FGMA to continue to review the interior renderings as they develop further. Exhibit A shows the developed rendering concept as the design team continues to work through the details. All the furniture that doesn't have texture or color is placed as a placeholder. So if you look in the event center portion, it looks kind of bland. They're still working through that of what that would look like. Updates since the November council agenda item. We're more confident that we'll be able to move forward with the upgraded sanitary line rather than having it to go to the lift station route. They're still finalizing the calculations and site plan to ensure that this route will be sufficient. We're also investigating the existing drainage of the parking lot, the existing fire hydrant flow rate, as well as any potential solutions, renovations that we may need to consider. The plan for the design team in Brookstone will be to price together, add, delete alternates in addition to the GMP, so that way we can consider them all in March. So it would be, here's the GMP for this, as well as if we would like to add this, this is what this would cost, so on and so forth. With that being said, they did request a schedule extension to allow them more time to go to the market. So they requested to extend the GMP delivery date to the March council meeting to allow them for a few more weeks to price out those alternates, as well as to go to the market one time instead of multiple. An ideal construction timeline, very, very, very loose, subject to change. I would still have construction start May 2023, targeted clubhouse move-in date of April 2024, with a few soft openings in May of 2024, followed by a late summer move-in to the event center.
Okay, great. A discussion amongst council on this item.
I just want to thank, thank the Parks and Rec Department and Robert and company for keeping us updated, whether it's on a regular basis. So excited that it looks like, you know, construction is on its way.
Robert, I will ask, did they, was the delay in being able to produce the GMP, was it primarily just kind of still the continued sort of supply chain issues and inflation? Or was there any other factors there?
Yeah, there were a couple of factors. Obviously, the holidays, they're working on the CDs right now, and they just wanted to have the add alternates for a complete package in March. Some of the drainage concerns, as well as this sanitary line concern. They wanted to just double-check and get that right, so they requested, I think it was like a week or two, which unfortunately put us beyond the February council meeting.
I will say the renderings look really phenomenal for what they have so far, so I'm very impressed with those. I would say we should run out there and just show everyone what we've got, but I, I'm still a little gun-shy from the last go-around, so we'll wait till we've got a little bit more certainty. Any other discussion from council on this item? And just so people know, I think that this, we've had this item on here a few times just to provide an opportunity, number one, for council to get some information. And if questions came up, then we had an opportunity to be able to have that discussion, so it's good to have that there. So, yeah. Unless anyone else had any other, there's no, no action to be taken on this particular item. It's just an update. So if no one else has any further questions or discussion. Okay, then we will move along to the one item we had on the original regular agenda. Consider resolution number 2022-76, Appointing Members to Serve as Directors on the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, Board Number Two for the City of Jersey Village, Texas. Lori Cootie, City Secretary.
Yes, so Mayor, this is for the consideration of those appointments for positions 3, 4, 5, and 7. All of the incumbent directors desire reappointment, and we do have an interest of one other applicant, Cynthia Copenitz. And this item is for council to consider those reappointments, the appointments to those open positions.
Okay, great. Discussion amongst council.
Lori, do you have any attendance records available easily for this? I know they haven't had very many meetings.
I can look right quick. Hold on. Give me a second.
I will say that because of the fact that they haven't had that many meetings, it's probably going to amplify. If somebody missed the one meeting that was there, that might be, maybe not representative.
Agreed. And I would only be interested, is there somebody that has served for two, or some of these have served for five years, but if they've missed three out of five meetings, that is significant.
Sure, sure, I agree.
I don't have an updated list. I have to go through the minutes to get that information.
Okay, then I would, I would move that we reappoint the current members.
That's a motion? Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Just to ensure, is there any further discussion? Because I know that was pretty short, but I didn't know if anyone else had any other concerns or questions.
I, you know, despite us having four, four members and all of them seeking reappointment, I wanted to thank Ms. Copenitz, I believe, for, for the interest, and we'll keep on looking for, I know she had mentioned several boards she'd have interest in, and occasionally we'll have openings come up, and I'd like to applaud her interest and also recognize the fact that, you know, other, other citizens also, if they want to be interested in boards, please, please apply.
Yeah, I saw it was a fairly recent application, I think we received in November, and she had, I think, three or four other interests, so I'm sure that there will be an opportunity to, for her to be able to serve. It's always good to see citizens chipping in and willing to help. And if there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second, so we'll go ahead and move to a vote. All those in favor, please signify, yeah, yeah. All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. Which brings us to Mayor and council comments. I will start down on this end with Councilmember McCray.
I just wanted to say Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, whatever it is you celebrate, and I look forward to all the stuff coming in the forward year.
Councilmember Singleton.
I'd echo Merry Christmas. Everybody should be safe over the New Year's holiday. It was great to hear Kimberly's history and recognized names in it, such as Chief Marr, who's here, Deborah Murray, and others that are still involved in our community today. And we are very blessed to have these long-term volunteers in our community. And would echo Jim Field's praise of the police department. I know the county's also had a lot of people doing election enforcement, and having had signs stolen myself, I hope everyone's prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law.
Councilmember Wasson.
Echo what, what Councilmembers McCray and Singleton said. Also want to recognize Sebastian and Jake on their, their good work, and they set, set great examples for our wonderful workforce, actually, that's all of whom are deserving, and recognize that Jersey Village is a top workplace in the city of Houston. So congrats to everyone for that. Merry Christmas, and then we have a town hall the first couple of weeks of, to talk more about the stadium and Town Center the first couple of weeks of January. Happy 2023.
Councilmember Shepherd.
If you haven't been watching the news, there's cold weather heading this way, so please be safe and, as it gets cold, and get out and wrap your pipes so we don't have a repeat of, of 2021. And then Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
And Mayor Protim Mitchum.
I would also like to say Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. I wanted to thank Chief and Chief for so nicely escorting us around town the other night. A few moms and I get together and we carol with a bunch of the kiddos from Post Elementary. Last year, we had 55 kids. This year, we had 75. And so Chief, they're, they're crazy, like little wild raccoons, just singing their little hearts out, but it went awfully slowly. We were more prepared this year. Next year, I already have my feedback. But thank you so much. The kids love seeing you guys, and they love the flashing lights. Also on Friday, it is going to be super, super cold. If, for whatever reason, it's not going to happen, but if, for every reason, we do lose power, hopefully the brewery, again, is lucky enough to be without it, and we will be a warming center again if that need arises.
All right. So yes, that is going to be one of my points, which is keep an eye on the weather. The city certainly is, and just to keep, keep your eye on social media, city website, all of the various outlets, just in case. I don't think we're going to see anything quite like what we had before, but a knock on wood. So, but, you know, better to be, to be prepared and not need it than the reverse. And of course, I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. So just want to make sure, because I put this on the agenda, or when Austin asked me whether I wanted to put on the agenda, I said we might as well put it on there just in case anything comes up. I don't think that, Austin, you didn't have anything that you needed to present that required executive session, right? Or nothing new, at least. But if any council member still feels the need for this, then we can still have it.
Mayor, I do.
Okay, all right. Then City Council is now going to retire to a closed session at 7:44 PM pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property, and Section 551- and Section 551.071, Consultations with Attorney in Connection with the Following Item. Pursuant to Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property, and Section 551.071, Consultations with Attorney, a closed meeting to deliberate information from a business prospect that the city seeks to locate in Jersey Village Ters Number Two, and economic development negotiations, including the possible purchase, exchange, or value of real property related thereto. We will return to open session and continue with the remainder of tonight's agenda after the closed session deliberations are concluded.
May I say one thing real quick, Mayor?
All right, the closed session was adjourned at 9:09 PM and no official action or vote was conducted during the closed session. Which brings us to adjournment, meeting adjourned.